Have everybody. Hi, Councilman Williams.
How you doing there? Madam Chair?
Hi, City Clerk. Hi, Vernon.
Good evening, everyone.
How you doing, Madam Clerk?
I'm good, thanks. How are you both?
We're doing good. I'm doing good. Okay, let's get started then. I guess we have, can we have everybody on?
Uh, so far, uh, Councilmember Washington is delayed, but she says she'll join us as soon as she's settled. And it looks like everyone else is here.
All right, well, let's get started. Uh, once again, welcome to the City of Inkster Virtual Meeting, August the 2nd, 2021. Uh, we're going into orientation. Uh, we do have, uh, we have items A through H. Um, item A, if anyone has any discussion on this item. Authorizing DPS to provide water in Wayne County with a resolution in support of abandonment of the city water main as part of the Avondale Road Reconstruction Project to be given to Wayne County Department of Public Service. Do we need one need to speak on this item?
Mr. Bivins is here.
Okay, Mr. Bivins, would you like to explain or what this is about?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council and viewing audience. This is a r- resolution that Wayne County has asked the City of Inkster to adopt to, um, for the Avondale, uh, Avondale Road Project. At Avondale and Middle Belt, we will be abandoning an old water main and putting in a new one. And the reason why we're not taking it out the ground right now because there's a whole lot of gas mains in that area. And it would be very costly at this time, so we're just gonna abandon and install a new water main. So that's why they're asking for the resolution because later on down the road, if they choose to do something on Middle Belt and they need us to pull that water main out of the road, that we have our understanding that we will have to do that. But that's why they ask for the resolution.
All right. Any questions on that? All right, thank you, Ms. Bivins. Um, next item, item B, um, Tracy Ann Jennings, uh, consider an authorization to sell three vacant parcels identified as four, four, zero, one, four, oh, three, zero, zero, six, six, three, zero, zero, and four, four, oh, one, four, oh, three, zero, zero, six, seven, zero, 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 and four, four, oh, one, four, oh, three, zero, zero, six, eight, zero, 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 and locate on the east side of Harris Street in the amount of $750 to Gary Pfizer. Do I have anyone need to discuss that? Any?
Yeah, I, I support that, Madam Chairman, because it's, it's right next to his house where he's trying to get the vacant land right there.
Okay.
In my keys.
Okay, do I have anyone else discussion on this item? Okay, moving on to the next item. Uh, Tracy Ann Jennings, consideration authorized station to sell one vacant parcel identified as four, four, zero, one, zero, zero, four, zero, seven, two, three, zero, 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 and located on the west side of Hickory Street in the amount of $500 to Gorewell, Gortwell. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing this right.
Gatchrell Woods.
Gatchrell Woods, thank you.
That, that, that vacancy is also connected to his home too, Madam Chairman.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there any other discussion on this item? Okay, moving to item D. Tracy Ann Jennings, considering authorization to sell two separate vacant parcels identified as four, four, zero, zero, nine, zero, two, zero, one, zero, nine, zero, 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 and four, four, zero, zero, nine, zero, two, zero, one, zero, eight, zero, 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 and located on the west side of Irene Street between Andover and Carlisle Street in the amount of $500 to Tamika LaShawn Dixon.
Nope.
Are there any discussion on this item?
Madam Chairman, there's also, uh,
I'm sorry, Councilman Williams, what did you say?
I'd say they also is, uh, connected to the homes on, uh, on Irene Bacon Land.
All right, thank you.
Was trying to buy these lots.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Any other discussion on this item?
I just have a quick, real quick, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I was looking in the packet, um, I saw the checklist. I don't know what happened with these checklists, but it's unlegible.
It's unlegible? Okay.
So, I, and I mean, just from what I'm looking at, and I'm not trying to like delay process of selling any of the properties, but I know that was a big thing we harped on was the checklist and making sure everything was, you know, ordered with that, to say like it went through ordinance and so on and so forth, and uh, stuff is checked off, but I, I, I just can't tell what's checked off.
Okay, okay. We do have Tracy on the line, and I'm not sure if it was, um, printed error or ran out of ink. Uh, Tracy, if you would, speak on this, please.
Good evening. I honestly cannot. I sent electronic copies to the clerk and it could possibly be, you know, once an original has been electronically compromised multiple times, it becomes illegible. I mean, that also stands true with some of the, I know some of the images that I send sometimes don't come out clear. However, when I send them on my end, they're legible clear. So what I could do, if this pleases the council, is the council's desire, I could send the original of the checklist, the same copy that I sent to the clerk, I can send. But I, I can't speak to, um, the quality here because that's not what it looked like on my end.
I can't.
What are you talking about?
Are you talking about the checklist that the, um, I guess that Tracy makes out, and she's right, once this, we're all looking at a nice, clear electronic copy. But once it transfers over a few times and into print, it does compromise the quality of the document. So I will work on my end to try to correct that moving forward.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk.
If you need, uh, I guess any assistance, you know, with that, I'd be willing to assist too, because I know it, qualities do diminish over copying, copying, and copying. Um, but if we, you know, wanted to look at a different electronic resolution, so really only one master copy is made when it scanned in or something like that, I'd be willing to assist if need.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions on this item? Okay, thank you, Ms. Jennings. Um, item E, Tracy Ann Jennings, consideration authorized to sell one structure identified as four, four, zero, zero, nine, zero, two, one, zero, nine, zero, zero, street, I mean, zero, I'm sorry, and located on the west side of Harrison Street in Andover and Carlisle Street in the amount for $1,000 to Mark Daca. Do I have any discussion on this item? All right, we're moving into item F, uh, the City Clerk. I'm sorry.
If I may, I'm sorry, I, I just couldn't hit mute quick enough. Uh, with this item, I do want to interject a couple of things. Mr. Daca had initially, um, added some contingencies and has since removed them. This is, it is a structure on this property that he's looking to purchase. And the reason that the purchase offer price was so low was because, um, I got some questions that he had regarding the, um, what am I trying to say? The integrity of the structure. Um, however, he has since relit, released and relinquished all the contingencies. And I did want to know, um, if it was the will of the council to perhaps consider, um, and I can get with the, um, Realtors to see what comps might be, but to consider raising the sale price. He's offered $1,000 for this structure. Perhaps the council may even want to raise it to $2,000 to $2,500. I'm not sure, but I did want to interd- interject that.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I, I, I thought this was a vacant, uh, land structure. Okay, I didn't know it had a, a piece of property on it. Okay? So I, I think, um, we need to see what kind of value with that, you know, that, that, that property is on there with the structure sitting on it. Uh, we, maybe we, we need to really table this until we find out.
Okay, if that's the council's pleasure to table it, then that's what we would do. If that's the council's pleasure to do so.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, um, ju- just as far as that additional conversation with, you know, increasing the price and everything, just make sure we order, so I'm good with that.
Yeah, I, I, what is the address of the property to it? Tracy?
One moment while I'm trying to find.
Okay.
Right here, we just got a structured, uh, we don't have an actual address. Just got a partial ID on this one.
It's scary.
I will get with the, uh, Realtor and get the address.
Yeah, yeah, um, well, Madam, Madam Chairman, it's okay, we just table this until, till we get the, the, the whole, uh, uh, picture of, of this land and, and the structures on it.
Okay, we would have to have a vote on that, if that's what the, uh, council, um, if that's what.
I, I'll bring it forward if they voted up, down, it's up and down.
Too much to do then, has to be, um, everyone is in, in, in agreement, then we can remove it from the table.
Yeah, again, when we, when we get to the general meeting, I'm, I'm in support of it, so we, uh, it, it should be good. I'm, I'm good with it.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions on this item? All right, then we are moving to item, I'm sorry, yes.
Couldn't we just withdraw this? Or do we have to vote on it, bring it back and table it? Or do we just withdraw it off, off the agenda?
We can remove it.
Remove it, that's what I'm saying, just remove it.
And we can, or we, we can remove it, we can remove it, and, and it'll come back up in two weeks, so table it. Two weeks, we can't do that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Do we need a motion for that or what?
Madam Chair, I'm under the understanding that it would be tabled in the regular session.
Correct, not, not in orientation, right.
Right.
Yes. So once we read new bill, uh, once we read, uh, consent agenda, we can, uh, you know, once I read it, or the city clerk reads it, and then she gonna say, what, you know, with the approval of, uh, removing this item and table this item then, okay?
Okay, whatever way you want to do it.
At the regular meeting.
Uh, yeah, I think when we get to this, um, point in the general session, that the action taking on item E would be to, um, we can remove it at approval of the agenda.
Oh, okay. So when we get ready to approve the agenda, we'll remove it then.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, item, um, item F. City Clerk, um, consideration approved for mother's slaughter at 3933 Bayham Street to close off Bayham Street for a block party on Saturday, August the 7th, from 4:00 PM until 10:00 PM. Do we have any discussion on this item?
I think you do that every year, I think.
All right, moving on G, this is the administration, consider an approval by the City Council for participation in the FDCVT fire hydrant replacement project. And on behalf of the City of Inkster authorized Jerome Bivins, DPS Director, to provide this resolution indicating its approval to the state of Michigan and to submit and execute documents requested by the state of Michigan relating to the acceptance of the FDCVT grant in the amount of $100,000. Uh, Mr. Bivins, would you like to speak on this item?
No.
No? Okay, so is this the grant that the, um, the Fire Department got?
Can you hear me?
Yes, so this, oh, this is, is this?
No, no, no.
It's not? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council viewing audience. This is a grant that I apply for to replace. We got about 165 hydrants that need replacing right away throughout the city. So we apply for FTD grant, and we was awarded $100,000. So that money will be used to replace some of those 160,000, some of those 165 hydrants would be replaced right away. Any question?
All right, thank you, Mr. Bivins, and, 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 um, congratulations on this grant, okay? Good job.
Thank you.
All right, item C, H, I'm sorry, item H. Consider approval by the City Council for participation in FDCVT Fire Station renovations and on behalf of the City of Inkster authorized Chuck Hubbard, Fire Chief, to provide the resolution indicating this approval to the state of Michigan and to submit and execute documents requested by the state of Michigan related to the acceptance of the FDCVT grant in the amount of $214,764. Um, of Fire Chief Hubbard, are you on, are you on to speak on this? Okay, I guess he's not on here right now.
He's here.
Come on. I'm here, I just had to get unmuted.
Oh, okay, hi, how are you? Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, thi- this grant is going to be used to, uh, renovate the bathrooms in the fire station as well as hopefully replace the roof and get new HVAC systems at the fire station. Uh, I'm not sure if there will be enough there to do the roof, because the, uh, the amount I submitted for, they didn't give us. They cut it almost in half, so, uh, I'm working with Jerome on that right now to see what we can do with the roof part, but we will be able to do the bathrooms and the HVAC system with the money they gave us.
Congratulations again. Uh, do we have any questions on this particular item? All right, thank you, Fire Chief Hubbard.
Okay.
Okay, um, to our city attorney, do we have any closed session items for tonight?
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. We have four closed session items tonight. We're going to discuss the IAFF labor negotiations, the Murray case, the Blackwell case, and the LaConi case. So, Troy, if you could also admit to the waiting room Jim Allen from my office as well as John Nader.
Okay, thank your attorney, Jones. Uh, motion to go into closed session then?
Move. Support.
Okay, those in favor, okay, City Clerk, can do a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Washington? Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Howard?
Yes. Okay, the eyes have it, uh, we are entering into closed session, and we should hopefully be back by 7:00 PM.
Chief Hubbard, Fire Chief Hubbard as well, please?
Okay.
Okay, I'll, that's for our closed session?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, um, I omitted a very important piece for new business. Uh, the Police Department asked to close off the streets for tomorrow night's, um, national night out. And I omitted it from the agenda, so I'd like to add that as the nine I when the time comes.
Okay, with the approval of agenda, okay. So we have to add one and we have to remove one. Okay, I'm fine with it. All right, thank you. Okay, Troy, I guess you can put us, um, take us into closed session. Okay, we all in? All right, okay, welcome to the Inkster City Council Meeting, Monday, August the 20th, August the 2nd, I'm sorry, 2021 Virtual Meeting. Uh, call this meeting to order, roll call, Madam Clerk.
We gotta mute ourselves. You gotta mute.
Okay, do, Madam Clerk, do you want us to do our prayer? Because we do have Pastor Detworth on hold, so you want us to do it first? Okay, okay, that's what we'll do first, okay. Um, you can let Pastor Detworth in to say our prayer.
Okay. Dear Lord, we come, we are thankful, we are grateful for this occasion, we are thankful, Lord, for this meeting. We ask, oh, Lord, that you will allow, uh, your thoughts to permeate the minds of this meeting, oh, Lord, as these officials come, Lord, to best govern the people in which they are in charge to serve. We ask, oh, Lord, that you will bless their decision-making, that it would always be for the best, for what's best for the people and those that they serve. Oh, Lord, we ask you to give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, oh, Lord. Lord, we ask you to bless them in their efforts, oh, Lord, and give them strength and courage when there are tough decisions to be made. Oh, Lord, we ask that they always pursue to make the right decision and not a knee-jerk reaction, but we ask you to guide them and to bless the City of Inkster. This is our prayer we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Detworth. Troy, um, can you give us a pleasure, uh, pleasure allegiance, please?
To the Republic of the States, one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Okay, thank you. Call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Watley? Councilmember Watley?
I'm appearing remotely from my home in Inkster, Michigan, County of Wayne.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Reporting virtually from my home, Inkster, Michigan, County of Wayne.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes, I'm here in the City of Inkster.
Councilmember Williams?
I'm here at my home in County of Wayne, City of Inkster.
And Councilmember Washington?
Yes, appearing virtually in my home in the City of Inkster, County of Wayne.
Mayor Pro Tem Howard?
Yes, here, um, in the City of Inkster in my home, I'm virtual.
Okay, we have a call.
All right, approval of agenda?
Full move, Madam Chairman. Uh, do we, do we probably take that, the table item off now or what?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to, uh, make a motion to approve the agenda with the exception of, uh, tabling item E.
And, and, and we're gonna add I.
Okay, and adding I, I'm sorry.
And Madam Clerk will have to read that over again. For item.
I think we need two items added, Madam Chair.
I, and what else? And, and the, and the, um, what was in closed session? Correct?
Yes, in regards.
Okay.
That'd become item I, that right?
No.
What?
J.
J.
Okay, all right. I'll say, I accept. So move.
Any support?
Support.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
And Councilmember Watley?
Before I, um, ask, is this, um, is this where we can make corrections to things? Um, like mayor and council comments? Or would that come later?
Uh, that will come in the consent agenda.
Okay, then, then yes.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, uh, we don't have any presentations. Okay, so now we are at consent agenda.
Okay, um, I would like to, um, we can approve the, well, I would like to, um, make some corrections to mayor and council comments.
Okay, we have to have a motion for consent agenda with, um, and support and approval and, and support with the, um, discussion. Am I right, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I make a motion, um, we approve the consent agenda with corrections.
Okay, now, do I have a support?
Support.
Okay, with the discussion, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so now, um, it's under discussion, so, uh, Ms. Watley?
Yeah. Um, because this document is a official record, I think it should be more reflective of what we actually said. And in my comments, it says that, um, I expressed that, uh, I wanted the council to begin to exercise veto power when there are concerns about policy violations. No, I asked that the council veto Mayor Wimberly's decision to pay $4,999 to Dennis Black. And I think that should be reflected in what I actually said, because like I said, this is a document that can be used, uh, it's an official document. So it should be more reflective of what actually occurred. And also, it said, I reminded citizens that they can write to council. No, that's not quite what I said. I said that the citizens need to address their counsel to get them to do what they need to do. Or to, um, uh, what I actually said was, I can't do anything with this counsel, maybe you can. That's why I said to the citizen, so, um, is it possible to have those things reflected? Because like I said, it is an official document.
Okay, uh, yes, we can. Mad, mad, hold on, hold on, Mr., uh, hold on, um, Councilwoman Williams. To the, to the city clerk, can, did you get that, so you can add it and make sure on the next meeting? Or email it to her that it will be, um, edited?
I will review the record and make the noted corrections.
Okay, okay, and you can possibly give her a call or, you know, just send us a, you know, it would be in the next two weeks, uh, we would see it in, in this minutes that you corrected it for the previous minutes, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, do I have any other discussion on this item on consent agenda? With the, um, added and, um, removal of item, which, which one, will we remove, an item E?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Well, we in the consent agenda now, we already approved the agenda, we're just talking about the minutes.
Okay, the minutes? Okay, okay, that's right. Okay, the minutes, okay, okay, that's right.
No, but I thought it was on the agenda, I don't know how we got on the minutes already.
We on the consent agenda.
No, no, we, we up under the consent agenda, and I messed that up, I'm sorry, but we are under the consent agenda. It's, it's with the consent agenda, it was approved, it was approved and supported with the corrections that Councilman Watley wanted to reflect in, in her statement that she gave two weeks ago. So this, we, do we have any more discussion with, on this? Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
That would be a five-two-zero vote.
Motion carried. Okay, next, boards and commissions, do we have any updates on boards and commissions?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do have an appointment for the Commission on Aging, I would like to appoint Councilwoman Beatrice Richardson to the Commission on Aging. There is an opening. I believe she does have an application on file.
All right, you made a motion, do I have a support?
For.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Five to zero vote.
Okay, motion carried. Do we have any more, any other updates on boards and commissions? All right, then we going into new business, Madam Clerk.
The first item is consideration to authorize DPS to provide Wayne County with a resolution in support of abandonment of the city water main as part of the Avondale Road Reconstruction Project.
Full move, Madam Clerk.
Support.
Any discussion on this? All right, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
That would be a five-zero vote.
All right, motion carried. Okay, item B. Excuse me, item B.
That would be consideration and authorization to sell three vacant parcels located on the east side of Harrison Street in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars to Gary Fizer, who would be using that property as adjacent to his current home.
Full move, Madam Clerk.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
That's a five-zero vote.
All right, motion carried. Okay, item C.
That's authorization to sell one vacant parcel located on the west side of Hickory Street in the amount of five hundred dollars to Godrell Wood.
Full move, Madam Clerk.
Okay, it's been moved, any support?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, any discussion? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Mayor Protem, you have five votes in favor.
All right, motion passed. Excuse me, item D.
That's also an authorization to sell two separate vacant parcels. They're located on the west side of Irene Street between Andover and Carlisle. And the amount is five hundred dollars, and the purchaser is Tamika LaShawn Dixon.
Full move, Madam Clerk.
Okay, it's been moved, any support?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, any discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Mayor Protem, you have five votes.
Okay, it's been moved, it's, it's been, it's passed, motion carried, item E.
That's been, that's been, we had to table it.
We, we skipped, we skipped, we skipped it, but we, we took that one out, but the next one, F, would be E.
Okay. That's consideration and approval for Mother Slaughter to close off Bayhand Street for her annual block party on Saturday, August seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, from four to ten.
So move, Madam Chair.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, any, any discussion? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Mayor Protem, you have five affirmative.
All right, motion carried, item F.
So this is for the council to consider accepting, I'm sorry, consideration and approval by the city council for, for participation in the FDCBT fire hydrant replacement program. And on behalf of the city of Inglewood, authorize Mr. Jerome Vivens, DPS Director, to provide this resolution indicating its approval to the state of Michigan and to submit and execute documents requested by the state of Michigan relating to the acceptance of this grant in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
Full move, Madam Clerk.
It's been moved and support.
Okay. I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, I did not get the support.
Support, Madam Clerk, I move.
Thank you.
Support.
Okay, Mr. Vivens is on the line, well, he did speak on this during orientation, and I'm not sure, are you here to speak on, speak on this matter again, Ms. Vivens? Hello, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I don't see his name.
It looked like Mr. Vivens dropped off a couple seconds late, a minute ago.
Okay, okay, well, he, well, he applied for a grant for the fire hydrants, he said it was a hundred and sixty-five hydrants that needs to be replaced. So he was awarded a hundred thousand dollars, and I'm not sure how many hydrants he can replace with that dollar amount, but some of them, most of them probably will be replaced. So congratulations goes out to DPS for getting this grant. Is there any other question, I mean, any other questions on this matter?
Madam Chair, I just want to say also, congratulations to DPS as well.
All right, any other discussions? All right, Madam. Roll call.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
That would be five. Mayor Protem.
Okay, motion passed. Item G.
Item G is the Fire Chief is asking for approval by the city council for participation in the same type of grant, but for fire station renovations. That's the FDCBT grant. And on behalf of the city of Inglewood, you would also be authorized and the chief to provide this resolution indicating your approval to the state of Michigan and to submit and execute documents requested by the state of Michigan relating to the acceptance of the grant in the amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, seven hundred and sixty-four.
Full move, Madam Clerk.
It's been moved, any support?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, any discussion? I do know we have Chief Hubbard on the line, if he's still there, so he can tell everyone what he's, his plan, his plans on, or how to spend the money.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, basically, what we're gonna do, the grant had three parts. We were trying to replace the roof on the station, replace the HVAC system on the station, and renovate the bathrooms in the fire station. With the amount that they gave us, we'll be able to do the bathrooms and the HVAC system for sure. But we're gonna have to try to figure something out with the roof, because they didn't give us enough to actually do the roof based on our bids, but I'm working with Jerome on that to see if there's a way we can get something done with the money we'll have left over.
All right, thank you, and congratulations to you again. Now, on the the question that I have on this, is, do, do you already have someone in mind to do the bathrooms and the roof? Or you gotta put that out for the, or did you already do that?
We already did that. We've got the bids.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so hopefully, things will start happening pretty soon then, all right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, congratulations once again. Any, any discussion on this item?
I just want to say, Madam Chair, also to congratulate the chief also with this grant.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else?
Let the, echo, same thing, congratulations, Chief Hubbard.
All right, if there's no one, no other discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Protem, you have five votes.
All right, motion passed. Okay, now we are in public participation.
I think we have some items.
Oh, I'm sorry, you know what, these items, items, H, H, that's for you, for the, the fire, the police chief, right?
Yes, the Police Department is having their National Night Out tomorrow, and they have requested and gone through the process of having the street closed for the event. I did not include it on the agenda, it was an omission. I apologize, and now we're adding it.
Full move, Madam Clerk, for.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, any discussion on item I?
Just want, I want everybody to come out and dump Steve Chisholm into the pool.
Oh, goodness.
Oh. Forgot our volunteer, thank you, Councilwoman Williams, I really appreciate that.
You sure did. All right. You forgot that, Chisholm, okay.
I guess we gonna have a line all the way through Inglewood, y'all gonna be out here all night.
Any more discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
And Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Have a five-zero vote, Mayor Protem.
Motion carried, item I.
Okay. So this is for the motion for the action from the closed session, where there was a discussion on the Murray Dawson.
Move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported and discussion on this. Okay, hearing none, roll call on this.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Watley.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
That would be a five-zero vote. Mayor Protem.
All right, motion passed. We are, excuse me, we are now into public participation. Councilman Chisholm, you wanna let someone in? I think we got three participants, hands raised at this time.
Yep, you were right.
No, we have four now.
Yes, I, it's on you, how you wanna recognize who first.
Okay, it's up to you, go ahead, just go ahead and do what you normally do, we can just do number one first, or however you wanna do it.
Okay, we're at public participation, where the general public has one minute to address this body. Please state your name for the record, once you are recognized. If you have joined us by Zoom, use the raise hand feature. If you have joined us by telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. And I do see the Madam Clerk has her hand raised, so would you like, would you like to address her first, Madam Protem?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Clerk, chat.
I received a correspondence by email today from Gladys Knight at gnightso94@gmail.com. And the comment is, "In light of Gabe Leland and Andre Spivey being charged as public officials with accepting bribes in exchange for government business, I would like to know if Mayor Wimberly would like to assure the public he will never accept a bribe." End of comment.
Right, thank you.
All righty, we'll just go down the list. Denise Champagne.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Ms. Champagne, how are you?
Good.
Yes, hi, how are you?
Good. Just wanted to let you guys know that we have a full commission. Timothy Williams was appointed about a month ago to fill the vacancy, so I don't know if you wanna add another member to make it an uneven count, but right now, that would leave us at twelve instead of eleven with the appointment tonight of Ms. Richardson. Just wanted to bring that to your attention.
No, I, I know that I, I, I checked with the clerk before, and there was a vacancy open. So I don't, I didn't know Mr. Williams was, was, you know, he wasn't, he, his name wasn't on that, on that list there, so.
But he was appointed in July, I believe it was.
Right, 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 I recall. So, so, you know, Madam Clerk, I don't know if you, if that was oversight or not, just human error, or what have you.
Yes, I'll go back, I, I don't recall Mr. Williams swearing in, so we will double-check the records, and.
He's sworn in. Like a lot, maybe.
I'm gonna be, before you get, before you.
Fire Kane.
I believe it was when Felicia was, the transition with Felicia and the new clerk coming in, but I'm not sure exactly.
Chad will correct the record.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks a lot. Next one.
I'm Vivin.
Hi, Mr. Vivins.
Good evening, ma'am, council of your audience. I come for you this evening to report on a meeting that the mayor and his administrator and myself attended today at one o'clock in Deboer Heights with Congressman Rashida Tlaib and the regional president, regional director for FEMA for Regional Five, which is our region. Uh, we had discussions about all the flood that occurred in, um, June and the rain that occurred after that in July. Um, several things were discussed that, uh, I would like to make counsel aware. A lot of our citizens have been rejected from FEMA, so I raised that question along with Deboer Heights today, trying to understand why. And we got a better understanding, you have to be a owner of your property when you apply for FEMA money. You can't be a renter. And as you know, we have about sixty-five percent of our residents are renters. So when they go to apply, and then they ask them to show ownership, they can't show that because they don't own the property. So their FEMA denies them, and then they have to go to a appeal process, which is on the FEMA's, uh, website. So they have to go back through this process again of appealing. Uh, we were given, um, a couple of sites where our residents can go, one was, uh, Wayne Metro Action Agency, and they have funds like four hundred, four thousand dollars for energy funding, like your electric, hot water tank, and items like that. And then they have fifteen hundred dollars available to our residents for cleanup. And I, I had Troy posted this afternoon on our website, and I sent it to the mayor's office, uh, I'll send it out to you guys tomorrow in the morning, because I got it late this afternoon. But we just had several discussions on trying to assist, you know, there were, it was, we were there, Deboer Heights was there, Wayne was there, Westland was there, Garden City and Refred. So we, we had some, um, deep conversation about how to, uh, better support our residents at the end of the day, because a lot of them are being denied by FEMA because they're not homeowners, they're renters, so. Rashida Tlaib and the guy took some of my comments back, and I think we're gonna have further discussions to see what we can do as far as getting them some assistance. But, uh, that's what I'd like to report out tonight, just, it was, it was very interesting meeting. I was glad we was inviting, I got to speak up for the residents for the city of Inkster. If there's any questions, I'll, I'll ask them now.
Yeah, I have one.
Yes, sir.
I, I know a lot of people who were homeowners that put in through FEMA and haven't been, haven't been approved. I mean, you know, so for them to say that this renters, a lot of homeowners, uh, was damaged and they put in, and they hadn't had any response from FEMA.
They haven't had any response, or they've been denied?
I, I don't really know, I can go back and, and, and re-question. Have they been denied, have they even been contacted? Because I know a lot of them filed it, and, you know, a lot of them went through your office, and then they had to go back and file with, with FEMA again, remember?
Yes.
Okay.
But I, I need to know if they're homeowners and they've been denied, I need that information.
Well, give me a couple days, sir, and I'll get all their names to find out. I'm, I'm pretty sure they're homeowners, because
Okay.
I, I know they're homeowners in Inkster, so I'll do that, and find out what FEMA have done for them, okay?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Chair.
All right, all right, go ahead, Councilperson Shaw.
Now, Jerome, did they, did they talk about how they was going to, you know, move forward with that on the application? So the next time, if something like this happens, uh, that renters are included, or if it's in the application that they would know before time, so that they won't get to that point and, and get discouraged because they are denied as renters?
They had discussion, but, you know, they have rules and regulations that they have to follow coming out of DC. So, you know, that's where it starts at. I think, you know, there'll be discussions about it, because like, we have a lot of renters, Deboer Heights has a lot of renters. So they, Mayor, he was speaking up too. And, you know, the other cities was like, yeah, we have renters, so what do we tell them? Because it's like, they have a loss, and if the homeowner doesn't step up and apply for FEMA, try to help them, they seem like they're out of luck, and it's really not fair to them, so. There's gonna be some ongoing discussion with that. I mean, it happened in twenty fourteen, it happened just recently in twenty nineteen, the same thing, where we had the major floods. You know, so, yeah, it's gonna be some discussion. And two, I forgot, we talked about the infrastructure too, and some things that are going on in Washington, trying to get that infrastructure bill passed, so we can start to improve our infrastructure, you know, so. There was a lot of conversation, but we just gotta follow through and see where it goes.
And I just hope that the next time, you know, if you're at the table again, that, you know, we advocate for, you know, renters, you know, as well. And I know, you know, if, if Rashida's there, you know, she's gonna advocate as well for renters. I mean, because it's, it's heartbreaking. If the homeowner doesn't step up, and you know how you have some type of landlords that don't, you know, step up on properties, uh, that they won't be left out of, 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 of the dollars. But I know that you, you may mention about, you know, the Wayne, um, you know, committee's gonna also help with that.
Yeah, and we did, we did, we did, we did speak up on behalf of the renters. Because like I said, we have about sixty-five percent of our city is rental property, so we did speak up about that. Like I said, along with other cities, so it is on their radar, it is a concern, because, you know, you have these deadbeat landlords, and if they decide they don't wanna step up for fear they might be in violation in the house, or the city might come after them. You know, but at the end, a, a person suffers, you know. They did give us a, a answer, but I told them it wasn't a good answer, because it was like, they have a rental program where the rental can get two months of rent free, but you have to move. And I asked him, I say, well, where are my residents gonna go if they gotta move out of their house? You know, they have nowhere to go, you know. So, you know, that wasn't a good answer, and I told him, you know, that's not helpful to the city of Inkster, and they said, they understand that. But, you know, brat cat, red tape policy, just gotta make stuff happen and get things changed. And we keep pecking away at it, you know, I'm not gonna stop fighting for the residents of Inkster.
Is there any more, any other discussion on this? Or questions? Okay, Mr. Vivins, I would like to ask one question, as far as, um, when you guys come back to the table, because I know a lot of this probably have to go back to Washington for discussion. Uh, what happens when, if a landlord has collected money, but has not gotten their property fixed? Is there any mechanism that they're gonna put in place to make sure that doesn't happen? And if, and do they have anything in place as far as the renters are coming forward and putting a name on the list to say they are renters? So FEMA or whoever can be checking with the landlords to find out what, what are they planning to action?
No, that, that wasn't the.
If their basement, you know, got messed up.
That wasn't discussed today, but I think that's a good, good question. If you could email that to me when you get time, I could forward that on to.
Okay, okay, because, yeah, because that would, you know, that we have to find some, we have to find somewhere we can keep track on of, of, of our renters. And if their house basement has been flooded, then we need to contact the, the homeowners, and they will have to take some action. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, any other, uh, questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Vivins.
Thank you.
From the Councilman, uh, Chisholm, we have our next caller.
Yes, Rebecca Daniels.
Good e, good evening, uh, everyone, Mayor, and, uh, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Uh, I, I think my question is, is to, uh, Mr. Vivins with regard to the, um, fire hydrants. I think he said he was gonna be a hundred and sixty fire hydrants. Are they, are they gonna be repaired or replaced? And then, um, the next question is, do we know exactly how many fire hydrants we have in the city of Inkster? And will we know exactly those one sixty that is gonna be either repaired or replaced? Do we know where they, where they are gonna, where those fire hydrants are?
Okay. He'll get back with.
Did that make sense?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
He'll get back with you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
To that, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, you can answer now, go ahead.
If it's okay with you.
Yes.
Okay, to, to the body, uh, to the public, yes, we have identified one sixty hydrants that need to be replaced. Yes, we know how many hydrants are in the city of Inkster. We did a hydrant flushing program this past winter, so we flushed every hydrant in the city of Inkster. So, uh, some of them will be repaired, and some of them that are like, probably twenty, thirty years old, they will be replaced.
And you said, you said you do know how many, how many fire hydrants are in the city of Inkster?
Yes, ma'am.
How, how, how many is, how many is it?
Roughly nine hundred and fifty.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, Octavia Smith.
Good evening, can you guys hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Um, thank you. Good evening, Pro Tem and council residents. I have three quick announcements, so hopefully my minute is not up. I do want to say that I share some information for the D-Snap Program, which is Disaster Supplement Nutrition Assistant Program. And one of the council members will present the, the form of it, because I don't wanna use my time. But I also wanna remind everyone that the Inkster Task Force, we are still looking to see you every Wednesday from four to seven PM at two seven zero two zero Michigan Avenue for the farmer's market. Uh, we have some beautiful vegetables, some great desserts, some, just some things that you can use. Um, Inkster Chamber of Commerce, we are in the smack in the middle of our calendar ads. So if you don't wanna purchase like a full page, a half page, or quarter page, you can purchase a birth date, and that's only twenty-five dollars. And also finally to say that Western Wayne Family Health Center, we are here for all your medical needs, whether that be medical or dental, pediatrics, OBGYN, prevention, so please take advantage. We are right here in the city, and we are here for you. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Our librarian, Betty Adams.
Hi, thank you, uh, Mayor, Council and community. First, I wanna say congratulations to our neighbors, the fire station, for all of the improvements that will be coming their way over here, if you need a hand or a restroom. The library will be participating in Night Out tomorrow evening, so be sure to stop in and say hi to us. We'll be show, uh, sharing resources, providing read alouds every twenty minutes, and registering library cards for those who may not have them or may not know the status of their library card, we'll be able to help you out. Um, we're in our final weeks of summer reading, so please visit our new website for a full list of events, inkster dot ploud, P-L-O-U-D dot net, or the old inkster dot L-I-B dot M-I dot U S also links to it, so if either link works. But especially Saturday, August fourteenth at two PM is our end of summer celebration, uh, featuring free books, lawn games, prizes and fun for everyone. If you have an idea for a program or a book recommendation, please let us know. You can call us, visit us in person, or visit our new website and submit your suggestions under the recommendation tab. Thank you to all who've waited, uh, and visited us and participated in the library activities. We appreciate your patronage, and we look forward to meeting those citizens who have yet to step in through our doors. Thank you, guys, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have call-in user one, it doesn't have a phone number.
That might. Hello, yes, my name is, uh, Leon Spinks. I would like to say that Councilwoman Regina Washington is a phony political dealer, and she should be voted out of office. Secondly, I would like to know whether Reverend Williams was at the strip club with State Rep Juell Jones eating juicy lamb chops. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's funny.
Next caller?
I don't see any other hands raised at this.
Y'all see any other hands?
Uh, no, I don't.
All right, that closes our public participation, uh, City Clerk.
I do have a few comments tonight. Um, I'd like to first applaud Mayor Pro Tem Howard for, um, her work here tonight, um, in light of her recent loss, and I'd like to offer condolences from our offices to you and your family during this difficult time.
Thank you, um, thank you for that, that, that means a lot. Uh, for those people who don't know, I lost my sister a week ago. So, you know, you keep my family in your prayers. Thank you so much.
And I, the second item is, um, the public hearing to hear from the public regarding the Rhythm and Blues Hall of Fame. Um, we're proposing to have that hearing on Wednesday, August eleventh at five thirty. And one final piece, which is a little lengthy but important, um, the mayor that received a letter uh, from the state of Michigan's, Michigan Strategic Fund, and the letter reads, "To the Honorable Patrick Wimberly, the Michigan State Historic Preservation Office of the Michigan Strategic Fund was recently awarded a National Park Service African American Civil Rights Grant to document the history and conduct the historic resource survey of African American housing in the city of Inkster from the period of nineteen twenty to nineteen seventy. This grant builds on a two thousand and sixteen MPS grant the SHPO recently completed to document twentieth century African American civil rights sites in the city of Detroit. Our research for that project showed that segregated housing was the primary civil rights issue in Detroit throughout the twentieth century and contributed to ongoing discrimination in employment, education, voting, healthcare, public accommodations, as criminal justice. As one of the few communities in southeast Michigan where African Americans were historically able to find housing, Inkster played an important role in the state's black history. The purpose of this grant is to, one, document the history of black housing in Inkster from nineteen twenty to nineteen seventy, to conduct a survey of three hundred homes built by the Ford Motor Company through the Ford Inkster Project in the nineteen thirties and determine eligibility as a historic district. It will survey the George Washington Carver Homes Public Housing Complex Built for Defense Worker, Worker Housing, um, copy nineteen forty-three, and determine its eligibility for the National Register of Historic Places. Survey the Lemoyne Gardens Public Housing Complex in nineteen fifty-seven Urban Renewal Project and determine its eligibility for the National Register of Historic Places. Survey homes in a subdivision developed with the assistance of Inkster's first all-black housing commission in the late fifties, just east of Inkster Road, Lehigh and Hopkins Street, that was open to all races, thus breaking a longstanding color line in Inkster to determine if it's eligible for the listing in National Register of Historic Places as a historic district. Should you have questions about the process or eligibility listing in the National Register of Historic Place, please give us a call as we are happy to discuss. The S H P O will hire a qualified historian to undertake the work. There is no financial or administrative obligation to the city of Inkster. We do want to partner with local historians and to learn from the public about Inkster's history. And one of the first steps in the project will be to hold a public informational meeting in, in Inkster. The M P S is working to diversify its historic preservation programs and to reach out to minority communities to identify, document and register historic properties that are significant at the national, state and local level. What this means for Inkster is that properties identified during this survey that meet M P S criteria as historic resources could be listed in the National Register of Historic Places or designated as local historic districts. This would qualify them to access federal and state historic preservation incentive programs, including grants and tax credits. So I've read this into the record. I will forward copies of the letters to the council people and there's also, um, a listing of the grants that were issued in different communities.
Okay, thank you.
That would be the end of my comments.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair. Just real quickly, uh, uh, you, you may mention about the, the public meeting concerning the Rhythm and Blues Hall of Fame. Now, is that going to be at a venue? I know it was made mentioned by council that they wanted a open public meeting, like a venue of the rec center. Uh, I know we're still in COVID, uh, but are we going to be able to, you know, do some, some numbers there or is that going to be virtual or?
Uh, go ahead.
No, 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 I'm, I'm not sure. So maybe, uh, the city clerk will know a little bit more, but I'm not sure whether or not if we're going to have this, uh, meeting open or we're going to be virtual. I'm not sure.
Okay.
City clerk, do you have any information on it?
Um, well, there was, um, a lot of discussion and consideration to have it in person. However, in recent days, we're heading in the other direction.
Correct.
We'd have to consider our, our residents and particularly our elderly residents and you know, just exposing them maybe unnecessarily.
So, um.
Absolutely, I agree. But I know it was discussed, so I didn't know what was the, you know, feedback from, from that discussion. So that's all I have on the court, I mean.
Okay, okay, so, um, so, um, city clerk, um, is there a way maybe, um, we could talk to the mayor and to find out if he can start getting questions and we have a Dropbox. Um, if we are going to have this meeting and if it's going to be virtual, that way you, you can, we can at least sort them out and read, you know, and have them written down or whatever, and then people can get their questions answered. Uh, maybe that might move the meeting a little faster if we do have the question, some of the questions upfront. So that's something that will, you know, will help in it in this, in a, in, in this meeting. Um, so maybe we can just get with him and try to see whether or not if we can get, uh, residents to send in or just have a Dropbox and just drop off their questions that they would like answered. Um, and then that, you know, that way when we get to the meeting, we can start answering and then, you know, take some more questions if, if we need to.
I think that's a great idea. I mean, that's in line with the practices of a, of a public hearing that we can accept written comments, written questions, and it's just a matter of getting it posted and somewhere to drop that information, so.
All right, all right.
It's a great idea.
All right, thank you, thank you. Okay, now we are going into mayor and council communication. Uh, we're going to start off with, uh, Councilman Shaw.
Well, you do, Madam Chairman, I think you still got it, oh, it went out, I'm sorry. It was another hand up. It went out. Yeah, Betty Adams, the, that's what's at the librarian.
Okay, but we are out of, we're out of right now public participation. I'm not sure, uh, Councilman, uh, Shaw, I mean, Chisum, do we let these people back in or?
That would be your call, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead and let the man back in.
All right.
Just those two, and then we're going to stop because we can't continue, you know, we got to continue with the meeting, but go ahead.
Okay, um, well, Betty Adams.
Thank you. Sorry, um, Clerk Chapman, if you would reach out to the library if, uh, the historic preservation is happening. We, uh, have gone through all of our archive materials, so we're aware of what we have and we recently did a, uh, uh, Michigan presentation on historic homes in Inkster, so we have that information, well, some of it.
Okay, great.
And then Georgian County Mitchell.
Yeah, Mitchell, uh, good evening. I would like to remind you that the city does have a historic commission. Those people are Gabe Henderson, Jean Liddell and George Mitchell, and I would like for them to be included.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I thank you. Okay, now, um, now, okay, we're going back to our mayor and council communication, um, Councilman Shaw.
Yes, I just wanted to encourage the residents to, to, if you see something, uh, say something. And also do want to give my condolences to my mayor pro tem in her great loss of her sister. Uh, I know that's a truly, uh, painful situ, you know, situation, and we talked about this before. So I do want to give you my condolences on that. Uh, I do want to make a big shout out to Anivia Battle, who is an Inkster Navy native, and I want to spell that her name, uh, Madam Clerk is A N A V A, I mean, I A, Battle. And that's an Inkster native, uh, big shouts out to her. She's in Tokyo competing in the Olympics. She's a twenty-two-year-old. And I want to applaud her for competing. Uh, her dream was to go to the Olympics and she's there. And the other Olympic that we had was Earl Jones in nineteen eighty-four. Uh, you know, he competed in the Olympics, but now we're making history with this young woman, uh, Ms. Battle. So I do want to give big shout outs to her. And, uh, she has, you know, support here in the city as being a native here. Uh, and I hope that she continues to keep up the good work and hopefully she'll bring us a gold medal home. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, um, Councilman Washington, Councilwoman Washington, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, just have, um, a couple things to bring up for tonight. Um, I've received a couple of complaints in regards to trash pickup in my district on Grandview. Um, and other couple of streets where their trash was, I think Wednesday it came, they still didn't pick up the trash. Um, so I know we've having issues like that in my district for sure. Um, also, um, the, the park on Parkwood, um, that grass is so high, I don't even think the kids can really play in it, so um, I wanted to bring that up as well for D P S. Um, this is on Parkwood, I think it's the Middle Park Matter Park. Um, and then in regards to FEMA, I wanted to put this out here as like a post-disaster scam, um, because there's people complaining or saying that people are coming to their door or what have you. So with the FEMA inspectors, you have to make, make sure that they do have the green stripe across the identification card and be able to, you know, a lot of people are saying too that they're coming back saying that they have to do inspections or what have you, so make sure you look out for that. And if you do, um, seem to have an issue like that, then I would suggest you report that to the general consumer complaint through the Attorney General's Office. Um, the phone number is eight seven 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 six five eight three eight eight, and that's the Consumer Protections Division. Um, and I have another update as well. And also with the U S Small Business Administration, they are offering affordable financial help to homeowners and renters that is declared disaster areas. Um, you don't need to own a business. And the homeowners may borrow up to two hundred thousand dollars and the renters may borrow up to forty thousand dollars to cover for items lost, any items that they can take with them. Finished and unfinished basements are eligible and contents and cars are eligible as well. The loan rates are starting off at one percent. Um, as low as one percent and then two, two percent for businesses and nonprofits. So that phone number is one eight hundred six five nine two nine five five. Also, I would like to send my condolences as well to my colleague, Mayor Pro Tem, Kim Howard, sorry for your loss. And also, I would like to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Councilman Shaw for Ms. Battle. We are definitely Inkster's rooting for you. So that's all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you so much. Councilwoman Williams?
Yeah, just a few things I would just like to, let me take my, um, I would just like to commend and, and take my hat off to the, uh, the people, the citizens in District One who, who rallied many of the times, you know, we, everybody was calling about trash and stuff and floods and all that stuff there. I'd just like to commend the people in that district that came out and gave support and kept cleaning up a lot of the stuff in, uh, in District One, okay? Um, uh, just want to say thank you. And then I want to thank all of the residents that came out for the beautification cleanup Saturday. You know, all this is tying in with, with the, with the, uh, the kind of pandemic wa, water, water splash that we've had, you know, it was good to see people, uh, not only complaining, but, but came out to help. Okay, and I would like to, um, my sympathy goes out to our mayor pro tem, Howard, on the loss of her sister, you know, I didn't know it for the first time I appeared, but you know, we always, um, um, we will give anything that we can do to try to help you, just call on us.
Thank you.
Young Battle is on the way. She's, I think she's going get some gold or whatever, whatnot, but she's there, okay? And that's one thing that we can say. And I try to tell all the young people in, in Inkster, you can do anything you want to do, you got to make it up my determination. And that just go to show you what we can do here. Another thing before I close, I'd like to take my hat off and thank him, uh, thank the D P S also, uh, for the, for the cleanup in the community. And I know District Three and District and other districts should also take their hat off to D P S because it had not been for them, we probably still have trash all over Inkster. You know, they went out there, the D P S workers, they, 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 they took the bulldozers and the, and the, and the dump trucks and all that and cleaned up a lot of that stuff there. Uh, you know, and then I looked over there, I said, I love it, we're going to do it all that pile up over there and then they put it in the, in the other part of the, where we got tree limbs and stuff like that, we got everything in there now. But I thank God for, for people like that, hard workers to get out there and try to, uh, to help us in that area. So I, you know, my hat goes off to them. I appreciate all of them that got out there and, and, and tried to help in their district. Uh, one of the things, the last thing I, I would just like to say, um, I know for a fact, and I believe great things are going to happen for Inkster. I believe if we all come together, you know, and unify our efforts, I think we're going to be successful. I, I do not like, I do not like, um, uh, the amount of money that the federal government, I know, issued to Inkster. Okay, when some cities got ten times as much as we got. Okay, I don't like the way they trying to, uh, micromanage what we got. So we got some issues that we need to talk about, and I feel that if we come together, we, we're going to overcome them issues, okay? We just, we just cannot sit back now and take a shortfall when other cities are sitting there. It's one city and I won't call that city's name right now on record. But there's one city got more millions of dollars than they do for, uh, that they have in, in their budget. Their budget is not even that large. You see what I'm saying? So I, you know, I see some things that went down with that, it, it really, I don't know, I guess we always seem to be a target. But it's time for us to come together and fight back. I mean, we really need to fight back on some things. I think down, down, listening to our, our Congresswoman, uh, we might have some things coming down the pipeline. We hoping that that come through. But we must come together in this city. It's just too much fighting the personality differences is going on in this city. And if we don't stop, if we don't stop it and come together, we'll never have nothing. God bless you. Thank you for listening to me.
All right, thank you.
Oh, oh.
Councilwoman Watley?
Hold it, Madam Chairman, hold it.
Yeah.
Hold it. Okay, I got an answer response from a, a, a citizen that said that they thought I was at the strip club, okay? God bless him, you know, and that's, that's, that's they're telling that, that, because I ain't never been in a strip club, but that's okay. That's all right. We get laughs, that's a good laugh. I hate to laugh at that.
Okay, um, Councilwoman Watley?
I don't have anything.
Okay, uh, Councilman Chisum?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few things and I will be as quick as I can. Um, first, I had a citizen who's participating in the Citizens Patrol tomorrow at National Night Out. And she had confirmed, I'm sorry, conveyed that they are still in need of volunteers to assist the P D. So I just wanted to let citizens know if they're interested in assisting the Citizens Patrol at National Night Out. I guess you can make that known to anyone who's a participant in the Citizens Patrol or contact the front desk of the police department tomorrow and reach out to whomever is in charge of the Citizens Patrol. Also, um, I had a citizen who asked on Amherst Street if she could paint her stop sign because drivers can't see it. I know normally the police department is in charge of regulating the placement of stop signs, but I believe D P S would be in charge of painting and or replacing them. So I will reach out to Mr. Business and, and/or the police department just to, uh, get that information across. Um, another thing, if the administration or someone from the building department could respond to this, because we tabled this item at the planning commission and it was in regards to site plan review for, uh, a parking lot that was laid because it hadn't come before us when it got laid first. Um, and it, and you know, and it appeared, and I don't want to make any accusations that the process was being circumvented, but the permits had got issued and now the talks are occurring with the engineer and Ego in the state of Michigan on what else needs to be done additionally. And not quite sure, I guess that's coming back up on our planning commission agenda at the following meeting. But if anyone could, I guess, speak to that, it provides some more clarity, perhaps from the building department as to how that potentially took place, I would appreciate that. And if anyone from the building department is here, if you could use the raise hand feature to speak to the matters, and then if not, I would just have to follow up via email.
And they will probably follow up with you, uh, email.
Okay. That sounds good. And then as far as the agenda goes, I know the agenda was on the website, but I had a few residents reach out who wanted to see the agenda packet as well, just so they could decipher and get clarity on what we're voting on. Um, because they don't have an opportunity to speak before we vote on the matters at orientation or during a general meeting. So I was just wondering if we could still continue with having the packets uploaded online.
Yes, yes.
Alrighty, and then the D-Snap, um, comment that Octavia Smith made, she was actually the second person who has sent that to me today, and I am going to read it at this moment. I have posted it on my Facebook page. I will send it out to my colleagues via email so that you can share it with your residents, because it is quite lengthy, but it is some very, very helpful information. Let me find it, here we go. Says to use this or pass along. Help someone today. Free bridge cards will be given out from August fourth to August fourteenth from seven A M to seven P M. There are two locations in Wayne County. Go lightly on the east side and Kamani Rec Center in southwest Detroit. All you need is your identification and a complete a short two-page application. This is for Wayne County residents only. Income will not be counted. I'm not sure if other counties will offer the assistance. It's called D SNAP, which stands for Disaster Supplement Nutrition Assistance. This is for everyone. State workers cannot apply. And this is part of the flood grant from the federal government. Feel free to share the information with your friends and family. You'll get the card that day on site, and this is in addition, or even if you already receive full benefits, you can still get this card. And after that, my final thing is to Mayor Pro Tim Ken Howard, my condolences go out to you and your entire family. You are in my thoughts and prayers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I yield the floor.
All right, um, I don't have anything at this time. Just said, thank you for all the, um, all the condolences that I did have. So thank you, guys. That means a lot. Okay, if there's nothing else, uh, we spoke to City Treasurer. I forgot that, that I forgot him. I'm sorry.
No problem. Um, I too do also share the same sentiments and offer my condolences to you as well. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Howard. Um, also for the general, we are in discussion with G F L about the situation, so we are trying to rectify that and um, we will be updating you, you all on that. And, um, to the council, your, uh, monthly budgets will be, uh, sent to you tomorrow in the format that you requested, Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
All right, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Okay, that's it for tonight. Uh, call for adjournment.
Don't move.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, good night and have a good evening.
Too.
Okay, bye-bye.